Yeah. But Joey Delap.
But I have two.
All right.
So you want to just read them?
Not looking for it.
Not seeing either of you?
It's not right now, it's one percent.
Oh, okay.
Shannon, I just realized I had a little response here.
You poured syrup?
I know.
I'm so sorry.
It's you who's making rain in my face.
I responded to it.
I was just looking at the emails, I was like, oh crud.
Should we do this thing?
Yeah.
The what?
You gave it to me, Penny.
Did you send that to me?
Kids stay, let's get home, ready?
Yes, sir.
Sarah Vakis?
Here.
Carrie Gordon?
Here.
Kenny Morley?
Here.
Brandon Moore Court, they will appear. If there are little attendance. Question set in all favor.
Alright.
May he inform. We're going next. Motion approved now.
Seven.
Motion set in all favor.
Five.
For little bells, for candidates, any questions on this?
Second.
Motion set in all favor.
Five.
By Angela Ford, two million eight hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and forty-nine cents.
Still moves.
Motion set in all favor.
Hi.
Close. Alright, reports, Brandon first.
I don't have a lot, later on, we'll talk about golf coaching. My recommendation, just as I have the time now, it's my recommendation that we will discuss later, splitting the golf coaching position into two head coaches instead of one head coach and an assistant. That would be one coach for boys and one coach for girls. I think you're all aware now, because I told you a couple of months ago that they actually moved the boys starting next year. The boys will actually compete in the spring this year for golf, but then they'll turn around and compete again in the fall, because they moved that season to the fall for the boys. So I recommend making that move now, so the coaches can move forward with their programs and plan accordingly. But we can have that discussion later, but just, that's my reasoning for that. Just a couple of things that are upcoming for our athletes and in our activities in general. Postseason volleyball, we just got the brackets, and on the twenty-first, they will be playing New London here at Wapalo. I don't have the timeline right now, I think it's probably seven o'clock, but I don't have that for sure. That'll be electronic tickets only, so I'll post that link as well as soon as it becomes live. Hopefully tomorrow or the day after, so it's out there and people can get them early. Cross-country is, I'm just gonna guess, likely gonna be at Regina, that's the closest site that, to where we are located, but the state can always change that, so I can't give you a location for that yet, but hopefully in the next couple of days.
And when is that?
Uh, I have to look that up.
Sorry.
Yeah, I don't know the exact date, because I don't have the location, so I didn't want to lie to everybody.
Okay.
The play, Aladdin, is gonna be held at the school November fifteenth and sixteenth, it'll start at seven P M. And November seventeenth, it'll be at two P M, so that Sunday's a two P M addition. Marching band is gonna be a state marching band in Muscatine on the nineteenth. They're gonna perform somewhere between ten and ten-thirty, is what I've been told. And then football is looking into playing a week nine football game. Everyone that's, I think that we're talking to is rather far away, so I, we're looking for, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking for a neutral site to play, it's kinda halfway in between, so maybe it'd be an hour for each team or whatever the case may be. So what happens in football is if, if you don't make the playoffs, because they've cut the schedule back to eight games now, instead of the nine that teams used to play, they allow you to play a ninth game if you can find an opponent that wants to also play a ninth game. So that's the reasoning for that. You know, back in the days when we all played football, it was a non-game season, that's just not what it is anymore in the one-eight level. So that's what we got going on, I really have a whole lot else to share with you. You know, lights are working at the football field, and they've worked for a couple of weeks now, so I feel good about that. But I, yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you. Questions?
Alright, the new typing has been installed over at the elementary, and so far, so good, everything's been working as it should. They're looking at getting the concrete taken care of, it sounds like this week they're gonna start pouring the street concrete section. And hopefully, once that's all done, the parking boilers have arrived for the elementary, and I'd like to start installing those. I just don't wanna be in their way and install them at the same time, but my goal is to get that done this fall. Northwest Mechanical has been here getting the boilers up and ready to go for heating season. The only real issue we had was in the cafeteria area where they tied in the wrestling room. But I'm gonna let Northwest and Odessa kinda figure that situation out. Until they do, we really can't heat that area, but I've called Blaine, and we're gonna get that resolved quickly. We need that heat up and running, but everything else should be good to go there. And then, I've been working on rebuilding a lot of the flush valves to the toilets, especially at the high school, the hard water is building up so much on them. I'm rebuilding a lot of them, if I can't rebuild them, I'm just replacing them, because they're twenty to thirty years old and it's kind of a year or so.
Questions?
Keep us updated on that, probably tie that in there.
Yeah, I was gonna-
Kinda let us know, because I don't, I don't feel we should improve any extra costs involved from Northwest Mechanical. If that was supposed to be tied in, it shouldn't have been an issue, it should have been planned out ahead of time and engineered and taken care of. Alright, my report's in front of you, my first thing again is the annual convention, it's at the end of November. If you want to go, please let us know, we'll take care of that. Our flu shot clinic is scheduled for October sixteenth in the afternoon, Hawaii's Public Health will be coming on site to do that. Cody covered most of the buildings and grounds issues, work continues on the wrestling room. They worked on redoing the entry floor. Dylan Bean made a post today showing the graphics in the trophy case, they look really cool, you should swing by and take a look at it if you get a chance. The next walkthrough is going to be this Friday at two-thirty. We are looking at getting two-way radios throughout the district, so that buildings can talk to each other. It's not a cheap proposition, but we have gotten approval to use our remaining federal grant dollars for them. So we'll be looking at moving forward on that, once we get all of that in line. Certified enrollment, October one was our picture day, that's when we take the snapshot of who we are serving. We have until October fifteenth to clear up any conflicts with any districts. Eric and I went this afternoon, and we don't think this number is going to change, but I have to stress, it's not official until October fifteenth. But we are up sixteen and a half kids from last year. Which means I am not going to be coming to you in the spring, saying that we need to make a whole bunch of reductions. So, how old are we for that? Okay? My schedule is included down there. Tomorrow night and Friday morning, I have an S A I meeting in Anthony, the other things are just your normal things. If you flip over, you will see our hit count, and remember, this is different from certified enrollment. We took a little bit of a dip, we had a couple families who ended up moving out of the district, and so that accounts for that dip.
Questions?
What was the, maybe I missed it, but what was the reasoning, like what was wrong with the entry floor at the wrestling room?
Something about when they laid it, and the conditions were really humid, and so it was raining.
Some of the little, like the little chips of color there-
Yeah, yeah.
They swelled up with humidity.
Okay.
So there were spots where it was raised from the swell.
I don't know.
And your cross-country state qualifying meet is on October twenty-fourth.
Sure.
Alright, real quick, the High Five Fridays have continued, and are all very well received by the kids, and I hope the high school boys and girls that are enrolled enjoy it as well. And appreciate the high school teachers and staff letting those guys come over and do a couple of nights later on Fridays. It's awesome thing to do. Fire prevention week is this week, this year's theme is make smoke alarms work for you. Kids and teachers have been talking about fire safety all week, doing their posters and talking about evacuation plans and things from their homes, and we'll, we'll make that with the fire truck rides and presentations from Wapalo, Oakville Fire and Rescue on Friday. Cody mentioned the plumbing and sewer line being fixed, we love the yard mess, but hopefully we don't ever have to do it again. So, character strong, October, every month I bring these to you, October is focused on responsibility. This is one that we talk about all the time, but it's a part of our PBIS and part of our tribe pride, being responsible. Clashing lessons are happening every day, discussing what responsibility looks like at home and school, so. As always, if anybody's interested in what that particular level of sight can, can you like to see it, just let me know, I'm happy to share. Coming up, parent-teacher conferences are coming the first full week of November. The sixth and seventh, Wednesday and Thursday of that week. Notes went home today, we'll start planning on games going, planning what days and times. So, parents can look forward to seeing those notes come home soon. During the parent-teacher conferences, we always have a book fair, and I wanna make sure and kinda point out, you know, it's not, you know, it's always fun for the kids to go through and get their trinkets and things and get their new books too. But last year, we got about two thousand dollars worth of credit to spend at Scholastic, based on the purchases that were made during that book fair, so it, all that does is feed our library full of new books. Elementary kids are kinda tough on books, and it's great to not have to use our general fund dollars to get those when we have that credit there that we can get books through the year, so. It is, it is a good purpose and good use of time and money to have them come in, and the kids, and the parents can get some Christmas presents out of the way too. Veterans Day, there's a presentation coming up early November, and the elementary level third through fifth graders are participating in this event. Inviting some veterans and doing some songs and things to help secondary building do their presentation for Veterans Day, so. Looking forward to that as well, and those are the things that are coming up.
Okay, on October tenth, which is tomorrow, juniors will be traveling to S E C for a college fair in Burlington. Always a good opportunity for our students to kinda get some more information on options for their post-secondary education, if they choose to go that route, so we have that going on tomorrow. On the sixteenth, some students from Wapalo will be taking the P S A T to high school. Kelsey had said today that we have seventeen students, tenth and eleventh grade, this test takes roughly about four hours on that day, so.
What are they doing that year?
No, we're not trying.
Well, okay, I mean-
Oh, in the time aspect, yeah, not physically.
No, we have a schedule in Des Moines.
One never knows.
Okay, on the twenty-third of October, Kelsey, Shannon, myself, will be traveling down to A D A in Burlington to complete our district career and academic plan, this is a D cap, this is something that we have to do every year. And this, this does go towards our state report card, so that's an important thing to get done. It is kinda strenuous and not a fun thing to do, but at the same time, it is, is something that we definitely need to check that box. Brett had mentioned the parent-teacher conferences on the sixth and the seventh, and we'll be ready for that in the secondary building as well. Last thing, I just wanted everybody to know, I got elected to the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Representative Council. Big words there, yes. So, I, I'll be one of twelve administrators throughout the state on the council to assist statewide athletic decision-making. Great opportunity to represent Wapalo, and it's also great, great for me to get some more knowledge with some like girl state events and stuff. So, I get to be on the council till twenty-twenty-seven, so, pretty cool, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Questions?
What date did you say the D cap thing is?
Wait, the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
House file two-six-one-eight was passed back in May, and this is a law that states that districts must provide students in grades in kindergarten through the end of sixth grade who are not reading proficiently, we must create personalized reading plans for them. And that's determined based on their F A C S scores and or their I S A S scores at the upper grades. So we've created a letter to send home to parents that communicates their scores on these fall screeners. It also will indicate whether a child is receiving intervention, what that intervention is, and who's providing it. We've done this in the past, but we've added a little bit more information to it to kinda just communicate the information that is on that reading plan as well. The health leadership team is continuing to meet monthly this year. We use the Sabres and the My Sabres data to identify students who need support with that social, emotional, behavioral health areas. We're fortunate that we can provide many of the services that kids receive here in the district, so they're not leaving school to go to an appointment, you know, in Muscatine or Burlington or Iowa City, we're providing those right in the buildings. Some recent and upcoming P D that we've had, the preschool teachers have worked on their goal assessments with June Morgan from the A D A. Last week, Seth Denny presented to the entire staff on A I, which was pretty cool. Tools that teachers can use to kinda help them, and then also tools that students may be using, but then how to kind of teach students the proper way to use those A I tools. Kara Beach has continued instruction on structured literacy and supporting our teachers with all things literacy. Jessica Vance was actually in the district today to work with P L C leaders on the expectations and procedures for P L Cs, and she's also working with the district admin team on creating some P L C walkthroughs. So we're gonna start getting those up and running next week. Lynn Selking has been here supporting with math interventions and other math instructional tools as well. Mr. Johnson talked about the D cap plan, and then the last thing I have is that the first district-wide P B I S event will take place on Friday, November first, the secondary students are busy planning their activities to perform or to provide for students that day.
Okay, questions? Personnel, three hires.
Brandon, anything you want to say about any of them?
No, this is Cardi, it's Cardi Hard and not Cardi Hen.
I noticed that.
It is.
I made a motion to approve the hires.
Second?
Motion second all favor. Close. Your donations, I involve.
Seriously, I didn't see when I read this.
I, I thought it was a typo. I thought she did a sponge here.
I'll make a motion to accept the written name.
Second.
Motion second all favor.
Hi.
Close. New business consideration, through fundraising.
So, well, you grill basketball, take apparel, drama to t-shirts, drama to get some kind of alternative fundraiser. Wrestling, gonna do, I think this is boys wrestling craft show loading and unloading. They're also gonna have a t-shirt sale, boys basketball's gonna do t-shirts and a duck collar apple, and then the F C C A is doing, the F C C L A is doing grill house for the rest of the school year, I believe.
And motion to approve the fundraisers, no?
Motion set in all favor.
Five.
Five.
Close. New consideration group, board policies.
Alright, you only have two of them this time, they are part of your regular rotation. If A O three-point-two looks familiar, that's because you revised it back in July based on state law, but it came up in our rotation, so you could get to see it again a couple of months later. I don't have any additional changes, so I recommend you approve them as they are.
I'll make a motion to approve board policies, A O three-point-one to A O three-point-two.
Second? Motion second all favor.
Hi.
Close. Alright, State Council presentation.
Alright, I hope you guys have luck in what you can expect to see from us through the-
Vice President, President Council.
Okay, the purpose of tonight is to inform the board about our process and showcase our event.
I have a member is grades nine through twelve, and we're partnering that we have for them.
Meetings and process, we have marcher meetings at seven-thirty on Tuesdays. If something is going on like homecoming, we have smaller check-in meetings throughout the week to see how everybody is going with their groups, and we have, all members have to vote on what we wanna do, like events, things like that.
So, as we had homecoming just a couple of weeks ago, some of the bigger things that we had going on was powder puff football. Tech the halls was kind of big too, and then some of the new ones that we had was the dance, which ended up being quite a bit of work at the end too.
Um, yeah, homecoming is definitely one of our bigger events that student council takes on, it's pretty stressful, but, you know, we get it done. We have good leadership, the student council, the five groups that really keep it together and the students get to be on is dance, pep assemblies, beer and night in formation, and then games, which is on there. But we just have a select few students go in those groups, and they can everything, and make sure everything's ready for it happens. Um, future plans, in October, we wanna do Halloween dress-up contest, just one day. November, we wanna do a pie eating contest, which is new. I know. We have some silly ideas, but they're fun. In December, we have light-up W H S, we wanna do a Christmas movie, and gingerbread house.
Then going into the new year, January, we're gonna do a teachers versus students basketball game, there's, that's something new also. In February, we're gonna have Valentine's, another Valentine's Day, can't even, coronation sale is just something that we've done in the past several years. And then March, we'll have pretty busy with blood drive, and then the game, so that's new also.
April, we have tractor pull, I don't know if you've got it, it's train sold that is- Upperclassman assassin, which is like a game that we do outside of school, but it's gonna be ran through student council kind of. We have Nemo Simo, just homecoming backwards if you don't know, and teacher appreciation.
And then for the conclusion of this, student council is so excited about the upcoming events being planned. Qualities of leadership we learned in the student council will carry into our futures, they love to make a positive impact in our school throughout this.
Alright, any questions?
Colton, you alluded to the dance and how much work it was, were, were you guys, did you guys do that as a student council put that on? Or how did that, and did you have a lot of participation?
Um, it was more, we had our dance committee, I wasn't a part of it, but I don't really know the background of it, but I helped out on Saturday morning to help set it all up, and then Saturday night, helped to get it up after that.
We all have parents' help, so.
Yeah.
I think there were a lot of kids who went.
Yes, there's really a return on actually.
Very good.
It was one less than the winter formal, so, overall good, yeah, the dance committee really just plans how they wanna decorate and events they wanna have there, like, I know the winter formal, we had some card games, I don't think we had that this year, but we had like some cool snacks and, yeah, just things like that.
Very good.
Yeah.
We'd have it all done at, what, eleven, eleven o'clock, you guys got done? You know, those kids stuck around, I think thirty minutes, and majority of that work was done with the others.
Good deal. Very good, very good.
Next up, acceleration set dates, times for future four-day meetings, sport order meetings.
You wanna talk about this, you want me to do it?
Yeah.
No, Sean?
Go ahead.
Okay, just, we had our first public listening session on October first. The answers to the questions that were brought up are almost ready to go, I still need to hear from a couple of board members, and then, once we get to go ahead, they'll get pushed out to the website, and we'll let the public know that those are out there. There's been some talk of doing some future meetings, and so, now is the time to nail down what we want those to look like and when we want those to happen.
I'd like to maybe do one more listening session for those who couldn't make it the first time, there's no good dates. You know, I know there was social media conflict of the D O T meeting and our meeting, pretty sure we picked it first, so that-
We're gonna hold on to that. We did say we would avoid a Wednesday.
Yeah.
For this mention.
We did avoid a Wednesday.
Oh, we did.
We already avoided the Wednesday.
Never mind, it was a Tuesday. We did. Yep, it was.
Will you avoid high school sporting events this time?
Well, that was the only one that was what, junior high? I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was high, it was high school when I was there, but we-
I thought it was just junior high.
No, I think it was Chris, high school volleyball.
Oh, Brandon wanted to do this, so.
I actually think Brandon's comment was, there's one event on that night.
That was the lesser-
I got your back there, Brandon.
That was the lesser of the, alright, so let's, let's have to plan that now, as we talk.
We just wanted to do the-
December twenty-third is wide open. Okay, Brad, what do we have, we'll maybe there's suicidally-
On a Wednesday, right?
It's probably gonna have to shoot on Wednesday.
I, we want to work to the like of these Wednesdays and day and go.
There won't be much gap in between, which practices wouldn't affect parents per se, so. But what do you have for a gap in the week?
Well, not between the ending of games and the beginning of games, you know?
Sure.
Because you wouldn't start any basketball or wrestling or anything like that.
Oh, sometime in November.
And you?
You give me a-
Junior high girls.
Yeah, pretty much.
Right.
Boys, junior boys, just.
But if we, if we threw a third one, we don't wanna-
So we need to set one.
Probably need to do it.
Twenty, is there anything on October twenty-ninth?
October twenty-ninth on Tuesday?
Just regarding that, I don't need to-
Okay.
Just regarding.
Mine. Uh, what you're gonna run into, or two, what you're gonna run into for the two weeks before the, uh, the play is, they're gonna be settling, so the auditorium would be-
When is the play?
Uh, November sixteenth, if they start that like, beginning of November. But, I can check with her and see if things can be pushed behind the curtain.
Well, I mean, if you wanna do it Wednesday night, you have, is there any trick-or-treat on the thirtieth, you suppose, someone passes?
No.
No.
I think thirty, is it six?
Is this a regional song?
Six is conferences.
Yeah. Six is conferences.
Parent-teacher conferences.
So you're gonna either have to go the twenty-third or the thirtieth if you do a Wednesday, otherwise you cannot have anything of a day, that's a week.
There's a way to October thirtieth.
Yeah.
What, is there a conflict there?
Uh, potential regional volleyball.
I thought you said regional volleyball was-
It's the twenty-first, the twenty-third, the twenty-eighth, and the thirtieth.
Oh.
If you need one, you can play.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So you could land on the thirtieth.
We tend to be scheduled for that night.
And if we have to move it, because we're still in postseason, that's a great reason to have to do it.
That's not happening.
That would be the game to go to stadium, so that would be a very-
We'll be okay.
Yeah, if we have to cancel, we go to that, I think.
Okay.
We're, I'm okay with that. I hope the community is too.
And what time would you like?
Probably seven.
Same time as before.
In the auditorium again?
I think.
Yeah.
What do you say, on the thirtieth?
Thirtieth. Wednesday.
Wednesday.
It's seven P M.
So that's listening. The left, second one we want to try to do is question and answers. Board and committee members and trying to set that up in November sometime.
Sure.
I'd say two weeks, two weeks after.
Oh, the, I'm on the fifteenth.
Your board meeting will be November thirteenth.
November nineteenth would be awesome. There's nothing on the schedule. November nineteenth. That's a Tuesday night.
That auditorium would be.
The auditorium will be done with the play. Conference.
What time should be set for that? Continue with the seven.
You want to go?
I'm, we're gonna, probably still gotta time when that things and kind of keep the whole.
Well, I wonder, how are you, how are we envisioning this, this question and answer? Is it the whole board? Is it?
Yeah, my own fingers went on. This is an open discussion about it.
Okay.
About anything, it's on the website.
So it'll be a work session, basically. Okay.
But I think we still need to limit it to some timeframe, just because we could get down rabbit holes and be here all night.
I'd like that.
With questions and answers.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
What day is this? November nineteenth?
Yep.
So November nineteenth will be a board work session. Again, in the auditorium.
It would almost be nice if we could have somebody that's weird, that maybe Eric can do this, keeping track of questions so that there's not repeat questions. We answer the question once.
Well, hopefully people hear their answers.
Yeah, they won't repeat it.
Do we want people to submit questions ahead of time?
No, if like it's, or if we do, that's fine, but not just restricting that because then people.
Right.
Right, right.
We can set it up.
Cause they're gonna be on the live questions.
I don't think, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. Select time on the nineteenth.
What's it, can you do a student?
A little earlier.
Six.
Six, yeah. Okay. Third, I would like the, it's everyone's opinion to then let parents out there, anybody that wants to contact committee members to meet in little groups or larger groups or wherever the community needs to kind of go over their differing opinions. Research that they may have that we don't have. Just to get kind of opened up to anybody and everybody that wants to talk to different committee members. It'd be hard to have, you know, fifty-person deal, but at the same time, we need to listen to each other. Okay, so I think maybe just out there to parents. Right. Could be a third thing. I mean, if nobody wants to do it, then they don't have to. If they want to meet with some members, then. Great. Does everybody agree with that?
And we'll probably need to have, we'll need to check with some committee, committee members to see when they can meet.
Yeah.
I don't think we want to set that for them.
Yeah, cause it's not, it's not for.
I don't think we want to pull them out of classes and do it. So it would be on.
Be on.
That work?
That work? As a matter of fact. So just letting you make sure that I've got this, at ten thirty, October thirtieth at seven o'clock in the auditorium, we are going to have another listening session like we had before. On November nineteenth, we're going to have a work session with the board in the auditorium at six o'clock. And that's going to be a question and answer exchange. And then we're going to work with members of the committee to put together some small groups, you know, looking at two or three and, and.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, let's see, we need, yeah, we'll have to do an action on there, so.
Those dates?
A motion to set those dates.
So move.
Motion second, all favor?
All right.
Close. Okay, so update on electrical upgrades at elementary.
All right, we had an electrical engineer come up and take a look at the elementary. He is not charging us anything for coming up and doing this. Um, he, I said, give me a ballpark figure on what it would take to get our electro, electrical service up to have more outlets and air conditioning in the building. He gave me a rough figure of a quarter of a million dollars to update the electrical system. That doesn't count any additional outlets. It doesn't include the air conditioning. That's just to upgrade the system. That's a rough figure. It's not an actual quote. Um, but it came up. He gave us that figure. He's not charging us for it. So we at least have an idea of what we need to plan for if we're going to do that.
All right, any questions with that?
So do you want Eric and I to start working on game plan? Do you make that happen? Do you want to talk about it more as a board next month? How would you like us to proceed?
I want to start looking at it happen and then start looking at the couple of years from now. I wonder if the bond is done and can go on that route.
All right, we can start working on, on a plan then.
Just that, okay?
Yeah.
All right, consideration through SBRC application on buy lawful growth for special education classes. Uh, the special education spending, the district was in a deficit position, which is not out of the ordinary for many districts in Iowa. Ours was a hundred and sixty thousand, one ninety, ninety-five dollars thirteen cents. And so we're asking for a motion to ask the school ledger review committee to modify supplemental amount of lawful growth. And then we'll decide in the spring, we do budget, whether we want to levy those dollars back, whether we spend them. You want to levy them back, that'll be a discussion later. We would like to capture the lawful growth now when we have the chance. If we, you don't do it now, you lose that opportunity for the rest of the year. So I'd ask to reduce that hundred and sixty thousand, one ninety-five thirteen to go to the SBRC for modified supplemental.
I make a motion to approve that application for lawful growth for special education.
So.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Close. My consideration to create separate head coaching positions for boys' golf. Yeah, I already kind of laid that out for you, but with the, uh, boys' golf moving to the fall, I feel it's in our best interest to go ahead and split them now, get ready for that. Coaches can get ready for their seasons with their teams individually. The boys' coach would work in fall and then turn around, or in the spring and then turn around and coach again in the fall. Uh, he's gonna have, he or she is gonna have, uh, the same athletes, uh, from one season to the next. So I just, I think it's time that we do that. And even, even as it sets right now with them, um, playing in quote unquote, the same season, they're really not, their postseason's are at different times. They're practicing, you know, even with an assistant head coach, one's got to go one direction, one's got to go the other direction. So it's kind of how it is anyways. So I'm just, I'm asking, or I'm making the recommendation that we go ahead and split those into two head positions instead of a head coach and an assistant coach.
I'll make a motion to, to create separate head coaching positions for the boys and girls' call. Kind of have to.
Motion second, all favor?
Aye.
Close. The times are next meeting.
All right, next month, Tassiana will be here with kids from the FFA. They're going to talk about the rodeo. And she's also going to talk about national convention. Is that correct, Eric?
Yeah.
Rather than bringing kids two months in a row, she asked if she could just bring the kids one month and do it all. So she'll be coming next month.
Um, I'm not sure, we had discussed, um, about the path that, you know, we were gonna go forward and try to work on things with the district and, you know, try to make things better. So where are we at with maybe updating the community on letting them know like the steps that the board is taking to, hey, here's what we've decided, you know, like here's our, our plan, you know, these are the, these are the items that we identified as a board in our work session that as a group in our group setting that, you know, this is where we want this tool to be in two years and five years and ten years on down the road. You know, transparency was a big thing that came up at the four-day meeting. And I honestly, as a, as a community leader and a school board member and a member of, of this community for my entire life, um, I feel like as a board, we are very transparent, very extreme on YouTube. The galley's open to public every time. So, um, I, I personally feel like we have to, we have to continue on the transparency. Um, and so I feel like I think it's time that we, we talk about what we as a board envision happening with our district, strive to keep people here. Um, whether we go to four-day or not.
That, that can be a discussion item or be.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, no problem. You know, social media, the webpage, articles that we can spend hours.
I mean, we spent four hours that night or whatever.
Something we're having Mike do and principals do. So I think it's absolutely a good idea. I would wear that on there.
So do we have those notes, everybody, that we just need to get together, give them?
Yeah, Tammy sent. I think I have.
Yeah.
I think I have.
I think she's. We'll shoot them your way again. She, she, I have a board to fill in today. Awesome.
Um. Consideration set eight-five for the next meeting. That was October, November fif, is it fif?
Thirteen.
Sorry. What are we on, six? Just a motion.
Six o'clock on November thirteenth.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay.
So move.
Second, all favor?
And Dave and Carrie's in there.